Meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the Modest High Public School District. It is Thursday, April 23rd, 2020 at 7:04 PM. We are holding this meeting due to the declared health pandemic and declared state emergency. This meeting is being held by conference call and interactive technology in accordance with Minnesota State Statute 13D021. This meeting will be livestreamed and they'll also be, will we post it also to the website afterwards? I see you with our board names. Yes, thank you. So, at a later time. I was checking there. Okay. So, we will have a roll call of attendance because there's a lot going on doing these things remotely. I see Judy, I think, is in now and been moved over. She's muted, she thinks. Wait, unmute Judy and give her a chance to talk to make sure. Judy, are you there?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know why it's unmuted, but now it said I'm unmuted.
Alice is an amazing behind the scenes person. She's making this all work for us.
Oh, bless her heart.
Yes. So, I was saying that tonight with running the online meeting, I'm looking at my screen at documents from the board book application. I've got a printed agenda in front of me and so Julie so kindly offered to help me out. And so when we do roll call votes, I am still chairing the meeting, but Julie will do the actual roll call of calling people's names for those votes. So, that's one less thing I have to worry about tonight. So, thank you very much Julie for that. So, we will start with the roll call of attendance and Julie, I'll let you go ahead and do that.
Okay, Mike Chevalier.
Oh, here.
Kevin Donovan.
Here.
Julie McGraw here. Lucy Payne.
Here.
Judy Schwartz.
Here.
Stacy Stout.
There.
And Claire Frances joined us tonight.
Welcome Claire, thank you for joining us. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So much.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Julie McGraw, second by Mike Chevalier. Roll call vote. Oh, any discussion? Any discussion?
What's that? A second by Kevin?
By Mike.
I think it's really hard to tell on the Zoom. It might have been Kevin, but I saw Mike's hand wave, so I'm gonna have Mike second. We'll move forward.
Okay.
We'll do our best here. So Julie, if you could do roll call vote on the approval of the agenda, please.
Okay, Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Stacy, Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Lucy Payne.
And the chair's aye, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
So, move.
Kevin, thank you. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Mike Chevalier. Any discussion on the consent agenda? I'd like to comment that all the donations and grants that we received tonight, which is about, what, $500 or so, will be used to further the mission of the school district and used to the wishes of the donor. Thank you very much for those donations tonight. Any other comments on the consent agenda? We'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Lucy Payne.
And the chair's aye, so that motion carries as well. Thank you Julie. Next, we have presentations and recognitions. Barbara, I'm gonna turn this part over to you.
Sure. And I really am going to turn this over to Scott Briskie and Suzie Prather, our elementary principals. Scott is the principal at Wildwood Elementary and Suzie Prather is the principal at OH Anderson Elementary. And what we have tonight, we had scheduled to have students come in and showcase their learning and we still, we didn't want to give that up, so we're doing it a little differently. And next year, we hope that we can do this with our students present. But I will hand it off to Scott and Suzie to share with you some of the exciting things that are happening in their buildings that align with their strategic direction. So, I think Scott, you go first.
All right, sounds good. Well, good evening, everybody. Before I start, I just gotta say, I got a whole new perspective of what my face looks like while I'm talking. Now that I've done like 900 of these distant learning video things. So, let me take just a moment and simply introduce the video. You're gonna be watching a video in a second here. It really highlights some of the things that we're doing to build student agency and it really brings out our strategic plan to life in Wildwood. In the beginning of the video, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what agency is and how it relates to our strategic plan. And then the rest of the video highlights students living this out at Wildwood. Up first, you'll see Karen Goff. She's a kindergarten teacher that branches out her little kindergarteners' perspectives to a global view through discussing wants and needs. It's a really, it's a really cool lesson. And through that discussion, it actually leads her and her students all the way to the Modest High Food Shelf where they're able to do some really neat, neat stuff. Then you're gonna see some really fascinating stations at the Wildwood Health Fair. After that, you'll see some kindergartners that took it upon themselves to teach about kindness and spread it throughout the community. And then finally, I was just randomly walking down the hallway one day and I ran into the second grader who had a clipboard and I just kinda asked him what he was doing. And he, he has a beautiful example of student agency. He's actually teaching an entire class about a tech tool. Not his class, a completely different second grade class. So, I'm gonna share my screen and enjoy the video. Hi, I'm Scott Briskie, principal of Wildwood Elementary. And I'm excited to showcase some of the amazing things our students are doing that bring to life our building strategic plan. Part of the mission of Wildwood Elementary School is dedicated to building the foundational pathway of learner agency and personal excellence. This is what agency is. It's self-aware. You know who you are as a learner. You know what you like. You know what you're good at. And you know how you learn best. You're curious. You're engaged. You're a deep learner. You go beyond just getting information and you transform your learning into action. You self-advocate for, advocate for yourself. Students, when they're, when they have agency, they know what they want and they go for it. Think of when, I just think of when my, my, my own kids were little and we would put them in the living room and then we dump a whole bunch of Legos on the floor and they just go at it. They know what they want. They're curious. They're engaged. They're building cars and vehicles and planes and hot dog stands and all sorts of fun stuff. And they're excited about it. They have a sense of purpose. They feel like they belong. And so, they work well as a team and they have a common goal. They're also super resilient when they have agency. They take action with their learning. I can tell you that when students have agency, it's exciting to be around them and they are excited to learn. It's really a beautiful experience. The following slides, you're gonna see examples of student agency from Wildwood Elementary. Enjoy. Let's hear how Karen Goff's kindergarten students are building student agency with needs and wants.
My name is Karen Goff and I am a kindergarten teacher at Wildwood Elementary School in the Modest High Minnesota School District, northeast of St. Paul, Minnesota. I'm an avid world traveler. This is me at Erg Chevi in the Sahara Desert at Merzuka, Morocco. And I've always brought up my travels and discussions with my students and added pictures from my trips tangentially into my lessons. But I wanted to do this with more intention. That's why I searched out the National Geographic Educator Certification Program. I chose to use a state standard that I was already teaching, Needs and Wants, as my capstone activity. Even though I had already taught it, it never felt like it really resonated with my students. It did, however, fit into the National Geographic Learning Framework in terms of the knowledge component of our changing planet. Children in kindergarten should understand what plants and animals need to survive. The way I had been teaching the lesson focused solely on the human world and a local scale. I began with curriculum materials I had used in the past by reading a big book called Wants and Needs and watching a Brain Pop Junior video on the subject. Both of these materials describe to students that a need is something a person must have in order to live and a want is something they would like to have but can live without. The following day is where I really began to adapt my lesson by adding the global scale to our study of needs and wants. I showed students my photographs of trips that I have taken that exemplify how people meet their need for water, clothing, food, and shelter in different places around the world. By adding the idea that people meet their needs in different ways around the world, a global scale was included to enrich this lesson. The idea that people around the world may not have easy access to the things they need, for instance, water in the middle of the desert, also opened up further investigation of the natural world. Perspectives were also broadened from a purely economic perspective to include cultural and ecological perspectives as well. There are two components of the National Geographic Learning Framework that I have not yet addressed, skills and attitudes. At the end of our unit, I focused our learning back on the local scale and charged my students of thinking of a need that we could meet in our local community. This activity engaged them in the skill of problem solving. After discussing many options, including bringing wheelbarrows of water to school, they decided to collect food for our local food shelf. They even wanted to share their extra snacks, which are shown here. Here is some of the food that was collected by my class for the food shelves. Due to a generous donation, my entire class was able to travel to the food shelf together to present our donation. It was a great way to end our unit on Needs and Wants.
The Wildwood Health Fair provides students the opportunity to share information on topics that they are interested in and teach their classmates the importance. The students run the entire presentation themselves. They use their own props and create an engaging experience for their friends. It's so fun to watch them teach about topics that they are really passionate about. It's really cool. You walk into the gym and you got students teaching about all sorts of magical things. Health things, technical things, growth mindset. It's just, it's just a really cool experience. Students in Ms. Holmes kindergarten class are demonstrating what it's like to build authentic relationships, foster a sense of belonging, work in a community of collaboration and trust, and show compassion for others through an activity about acts of kindness. After listening to a story called Be Kind by Pat Zillow Miller, the students had a rich discussion about the many ways that we can be kind to each other. They created original artwork and they wrote sentences describing acts of kindness. Using iPads, each child took a photo of their work, recorded their ideas, and shared their product with their families on Seesaw. What a cool example of student agency at such a young age. I was walking through the hall one day and I saw three students sitting with people in the classroom. One second grade student had a clipboard and he was giving others some very specific instructions. So, of course, I asked, hey, what exactly is going on here? I found out that this second grade student was an expert in this tech tool called Osmo. And he was single-handedly teaching the entire class about this tech tool. Not his own class, because he already did that. He was teaching an entirely different class of students so that they could be successful. Wow, talk about student agents. Thank you for the opportunity to share some examples of the way in which we are working on building a foundational pathway of agency at Wildwood Elementary. As you can tell, we are a joy-centered family at Wildwood and we will continue to work on ways that we can build agency in our Zephyrs through play, exploration, creativity, and choice.
Thank you. I'm Suzie Prather and I'm the principal of OH Anderson and I wanted to wish all of you a good evening to the board members, superintendent Duffrin, and the community. And I'm so excited to share a little bit about OH Anderson and how we show agency there. And it's really nice to kinda see that continuum because Scott and I are really looking at, what is that K5 continuum look for kids? So, I'm gonna share my screen here. Present here. Thank you. So, I'm so excited tonight to share and celebrate the work that happens at OH Anderson around learner agency. And as Scott had said, learner agency is kind of the huge piece of our strategic plan because what we want kids to do, especially in grades three, four, and five, kids are developmentally starting to know who they are as learners and their passions and they start to see their independence and power and how they can contribute to the world. And so, some of the student agency that you see kinda highlighted in our strategic plan really shows how students know themselves, have authentic student voice choice, and are empowered to make the world a better place. So, as Scott had kind of articulated, what is student agency? It's really to take purposeful initiative. It's the opposite of helplessness. Students are curious and interested and passionate about learning something in depth. They're valuing learning and they're seeing themselves as having a sense of purpose. And so, I have a lot of examples and as Barb Duffrin had said earlier, we wanted to bring all the kids in so they could speak to it. So, I will share a few examples and then we will have some students that will actually speak to some of their work. And so, what happened this fall is at OH Anderson, we have a lot of recess games and fun things. So, the Gaga Pit was a new hit and football is another hit at recess. And what happened at recess is some of the kids were coming to me and saying, it's not that much fun, Ms. Prather. People aren't playing by the rules. It's not safe. And so, I said, well, instead of me just solving the problem, I said, well, what, what do you think we could do about it? And a group of fourth grade students spent during their win time really looking at, what are the rules? The essential rules we need to teach everyone in our school so we can have fun at recess and play football safely. They also priced out flags and belts so we could be playing flag football because the touch thing wasn't quite working well. And then these students actually presented on morning announcements and taught their peers about really flag football and really saw the success of it. And that group of students, it was just generated by a need, a felt need in our school and they really saw the sense of purpose and how they had the power to make our school a better place. We also had, and this all is generated from the students, Delaney and Caitlin came, came to me with a proposal because they said that they just love school so much, but they see some of their peers and other kids in classes maybe not loving it to the same passion as they have. So, they put together a presentation about why school rocks and why it's important in your life. And these two girls shared it with 15 classes during morning meeting, their presentation, to really spread their joy and their love and their passion about school. And this really articulates curiosity and interest in learning and really shows that campaign as they're spreading that through our school. Another group, and I think I had heard some of these kids might be in the audience seeing their work. Another group, Delaney, Medkin, Caitlin, John Sawyer, and Cal all came to me and they said that they wanna do something to make the world a better place. And they really were upset that there were people that were going hungry, both in our community and in the greater world. And so, they came up with the idea to start a school store and donate the money to feed my starving children. Well, it started small. It started with three people and I gave them a little loan, which ended up being a donation for them. But I gave them a loan to start their school store. And then the interesting thing is other kids started thinking about other items that they could put in the store to kind of really build that momentum and the school store was a success. They earned $278.49 to donate to feed my starving children. And I think our goal was 100, so we surpassed that. And I think this really shows how these students are contributing to the world. They had a passion. They did all of the work about thinking about what do kids want? How would we price it appropriately? What does it mean to have a loan and to pay back a loan? And also, how do you do, kinda keep inventory? I have to say, these students kept inventory. There's a little video on the right of the kids counting the money. That was one of their favorite things to make sure that that inventory, we had the ins and outs appropriate. So, it was kind of a great way that students really showed their contribution, not just to our school, but to the world. I also spent some times, my favorite part of the day is being with kids, whether it's in the classrooms or in the lunchroom. And I was eating lunch with some fourth grade students and, and they're very creative students. And they were talking about, they all love to be on the morning announcements, but they were thinking, wouldn't it be cool to have like a new studio and have a video announcements? And we got talking about it and said, how could we use that? It wouldn't be just for announcements. And Addison, Amelia, Katiana, and Braylon kind of thought through a grant for MAFE and it was all about a new studio and how they could have a green screen so when kids are studying different projects that they could go public with those projects really live and use their theatrical gifts and make presentations. And this was all prior to distance learning, so this is like how we live now. But these girls wrote a grant with me and actually, right before distance learning, we received the grant. And I know I was in, recently, we ordered everything and I know the padcaster came in. So, we're ready to rock and roll once school opens next year with that. But again, this shows how students are showing their voice and they're making their voice heard and they're really seeing the power that they have by seeing a need and doing something to make a difference for them. This group of ladies, Ilsa, Mia, Ruby, and Emmy, they wanted to celebrate kind of that character contest in our school. We really are trying to really build that community around some different things. So, in January, they were catching kids being kind and they had character contests and they were hanging those up in the hallway to celebrate all of the kids that are doing kind things, announcing it on announcements. And in February, for I Love to Read, they had all these great books that kids were reading and they had plans for the rest of the months. But these students really just wanted to share their passions and how do we make our school a great place around learning and around being good people. And so, this really celebrates personal excellence, how we're celebrating the great work that we're doing every day at all of our schools. This is another group. I had some students, fifth graders, and they wanted to help the younger kids. And that's one thing in third, fourth, and fifth, it's not such a big gap. But, you know, to help the younger ones, they would really love to help kindergartners and get over there. But the fifth graders spent some time during their recess going into win time, reading with kids, practicing math, facts, math games during win time, just to spread the love of learning and to empower the younger kids to do their best work as well. And another example I wanted to share, it's Isabella, Halen, Yuktika, and Summer. And those four ladies started a OHA newspaper. And you can see, it's the Zephyr Post. They've made four editions of the Zephyr Post and it is continuing during distance learning. They are the ones that write it, edit it, print it. They advertise it. They distribute it. And they are really opening it up to the whole community. So, we have people submitting different articles to go into the newspaper. We have comics going into the newspaper. And these four ladies are organizing that whole newspaper and sharing their passions for writing, but also their passions are illustrated in the Zephyr Post. You'll see jokes in there. I know the latest edition during distance learning, how to not be bored during distance learning. They have puzzles. They have all kinds of things in their newspaper. But this really is an example to show what it is to be better together, to show and make connections, to show discovery and pursue passions. And I'm so excited, when I'm finished here, we'll have some of the students here to talk with you about what does it mean to create a newspaper? How does that enrich their learning at OH Anderson? I have to say, learner agency is happening during distance learning. Students are showing their initiative. They're becoming more curious. I'm getting pictures of kids investigating. These are some of the pictures I've gotten in, but really them investigating some of their passions. Some kids are making videos. They're sending in things for me to put on morning announcements, but they're really feeling their sense of purpose and really taking initiative in their own learning. So, we're seeing this agency and as Scott said, it's really exciting to see, you know, what does this learner agency look like in kindergarten all the way to fifth grade? And that's really what our challenge is. How do we continue to grow it and foster it and really support our kids in really knowing who they are and knowing that they can make a difference in the world? So, I just showed a couple snippets of OH Anderson students showing learner agency. There's a ton more examples. And I'm just proud to be part of a community where our students are contributing to not only our school, but the community of Modest High and the greater world. So, I'm gonna stop sharing here so we can see some of my students and I think they will be here. Let's see if we see any of them coming in. And Alice, will I see the newspaper crew?
I'm gonna start adding the students right now.
There's Halen. Good to see you. And I think Isabella's coming in, Bixby. I see her mom's name. She'll be here. And I think Yuktika is joining us as well. And so, once we get all of them, then I just have a couple questions that I'll ask them and then you're more than welcome to answer or ask any questions as well. So, I see Yuktika and if she wants to unmute her camera and Isabella, if you wanna unmute your camera. And then we'll be ready to go.
Okay, we can do that. We can, we're gonna unmute our camera.
Yes, yeah, that would be great.
Wait, it's not showing up. It won't.
Not showing up here either.
It's not over there.
Okay, well, what we can do is we can certainly start by just having each student introduce who they are and their grade and maybe something that was a wow from doing the newspaper, something that you loved about doing the newspaper. So, let's start with Halen.
Something I like to do... Oh, was I muted?
Yeah, you're good now. We can hear you now. Yeah, you're good.
I'm Halen and one thing that I like doing with the newspaper is brushing with my friends and writing because writing is one of my favorite subjects.
Thank you. And how about Isabella? Can you hear us? If you wanna share your name and something that you liked about the newspaper?
I'm Isabella and what I like about doing the newspaper is getting to do it with my friends and being like, getting to express by writing, so.
Thank you. And Yuktika, if you wanna introduce yourself and share something that you liked about the newspaper?
Yuktika, and what I really liked about the newspaper is that it got to be really creative with my writing because I just, I really love writing in all different ways, so that's what I really liked about the newspaper. Thanks.
Thank you. And then I'll let each of you guys either share either a challenge that you faced or some advice to other people that wanna start a newspaper. So, we'll start with Halen. Either a challenge or advice for others.
One challenge that we faced during writing the newspaper is disagreeing over something. We disagree a lot, but that's what helps us make a better newspaper because then we can all try to agree on this one thing and it ends up being revised and being a better thing.
Thank you, thank you. And how about you, Isabella? Do you wanna share either a challenge or advice for others with the newspaper?
Some advice would be have fun and be creative.
Thank you. And how about you, Yuktika?
That we should, I have advice that it's actually a little bit more work than you expect because like when I first started, I didn't think that I would have to like work on it as much. But like I ended up working on it in my free time in like, in media and I just, I just did it because I really wanted it to be long and people to actually to read it. If it was a one-page newspaper, then there would never be any points. We were like working in there almost every day in a week for the first few times. And if it was just a little short one, then that wouldn't make any sense.
Thank you. And I have to say, these girls were so flexible in their learning because sometimes they'd work in my office, sometimes the conference room, sometimes, I mean, they would float around and find a workspace just so they could collaborate. And I think another strength that I saw is, I think Halen articulated it. They had to really work to compromise on what did they want for their newspaper? And I think the beauty of it is if we ever deleted anything in Google Docs, we could always go back to that revision history, right, and find the stuff that we did. Open it up to the board and our superintendent if there's questions for our students that have shown learner agency.
Do any board members have questions or comments? Mike, go ahead.
I think it's really great that you guys are doing that and I think that your creativity, your ability to express your writing, be creative in your writing. and your ability to express your writing, be creative in your writing, I love how your disagreements, you said that kind of forces the collaboration together. So I think that's terrific for you guys for doing that. So I just want to say thank you for doing that. And I'm really, really impressed. Can I, can I subscribe somehow?
We can send you the links. We'll get you all the links. They come in all of our e-news as well.
Stacy, go ahead.
I just want to say, I have seen the newspaper, because Ethan brings it home, Ethan Stout, and I know he misses seeing you guys. And I'm always very impressed with it. So congratulations to you guys for work well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Oh, Julie, go ahead.
I just wanted to say how impressive it is and what a great opportunity this is for you girls. You're really lucky. So congratulations.
So I have a question for our newspaper team here. I'm curious about the future of your newspaper. So you've done great work this year, and it sounds like you're continuing with the distance learning piece, and that might be a little more challenging right now. But then what happens next year? How do you continue to surpass it on? So I don't know who to start with that, but I'm curious about the future.
Yeah, we, on our last newspaper, we actually put a link on for a Google form for fourth graders to fill out, so that we could pass it on.
If they wanted to do the newspaper themselves, all they had to do was fill it out, and we could just check on it and see how it was going. Actually, Isabella made that part, and she like, especially doing distant learning, she was really on it, like, she was on it almost like for like entire hour, she just working on it and making it perfect because of distant learning. She edited half the stuff just to make it feel like it was okay and everything. She worked a lot on that.
Barb, go ahead.
Well, that leads into my question. I heard that you had tips on how not to be bored during distance learning. Do you have a couple of those for the people out there who are watching?
Read, read as much as you can. It's awesome.
Yeah. Read, write, get outside.
Yeah, get outside, make a craft, read, write, yeah.
Another question, if you have another couple minutes here. I know we have a local paper, and I know our local reporter, Loretta, is on listening to us as well. So someone who might be a mentor to you, but have you reached out to reporters or newspapers or done any research in looking at other papers before you did yours?
Not really. But I actually recently, but like before distant learning, for, because I'm in student council, and one of the photographers, I asked her if she could like take some photos for like our newspaper. But since I'm only in fifth grade, I didn't have, I couldn't like get my own email. And so I told my teacher, but we never really got to go any farther from that, because school didn't continue.
So I may ask one last question, I think, and then we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin, go ahead.
Mine is more of a, make sure that I'm... There we go. I just wanted to tell the young students here that it's most impressive that you're coming on this call with us. And it's so refreshing, I'm on these Zoom calls all the time. But this is my favorite one, because of you guys coming in here and brightening, brightening our meeting. So thank you for the work you're doing on the school newspaper.
So before you all leave, if you could maybe each tell us, and we'll start with Isabella, she hasn't had as many opportunities to speak to us yet, if we could start with you, Isabella, and you could all think about and share something with us that you're taking away from this experience that makes you a better learner as you go into middle school, as you go into more learning later in your life. What has this done for you personally?
Well, I get to like manage something, so that helps me like getting to like do something more and like manage it with like my friends. So I think that would help.
We'd like to go next. Haylin, you're unmuted, it looks like. Why don't you go ahead?
One thing that I have learned from the experience of writing newspaper is that it helps my creativity, and I like writing and the reading, and I've been editing a lot. So I'm able to kind of spot mistakes in my writing.
That's great. And I'm sorry, I forgot, Yukita?
Yuktaka.
Yuktaka, thank you.
So what I learned is that like you have to really like compromise a lot, because if you have a really, 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 really good idea, and you really want to share with your friends, you should just think about it like a second time, like revise it before, and like compromise with your friends, because you know, like I know that like they're all really smart, and they probably already have like some ideas, something like that. And like, especially in the recent ones, we did some fun stuff. And it was when we all just, and my ideas, it was, it kind of exploded back in our faces. So we had to like kind of calm down and realize what we were doing and do like the right thing and the funner one.
Thank you. I just have to say, the kids are the show. So this is what we want for our Zephyr showcases, is to let you hear from the kids. So I thank all three of you guys for coming. And it's so good to see your faces, because I miss all of you. But thank you to the board for letting us share what learner agency it looks like, K5.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the way that your two presentations folded together and show how in a K5 environment, even though our buildings are separated by a little bit of space. So I think that's great collaboration between those two buildings. Thank you so much for working so well together. All right. So we're gonna move on on the agenda, Barb, unless there's something else you want to say about the student showcases or presentations?
I think there was a student who still had something more to say, that right? Were you just raising your hand, or were you saying hello?
Haylin, go ahead.
Go ahead, Haylin.
I was just gonna say that one of our friends wasn't able to make it to the meeting. And so it wasn't just us three.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And I showed a picture of all four of you. So we got everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, girls. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Bye, thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a report from our student representative. Claire, we've missed you. Welcome.
Thank you. I missed coming to meetings too. So for this, I thought I would do kind of how distance learning is going at each school. I couldn't find anybody to talk to from Wildwood, unfortunately, but I have a fifth grader, an eighth grader, and then myself and my friends, we all just talked about it a little bit. So starting with OHA, it looks like they have Google meets with their homeroom teacher about two times a week to check in. And then they have assignments every day for reading and writing, or reading and writing, and then math. And then two and a half to three hours a day of schoolwork. And then overall, it looks like it was a good transition, at least for the student I talked to. And then their favorite thing was getting things done, and then being able to play outside or on Xbox. And then the thing they didn't like was that they don't get to see their friends. So middle schoolers, this was an eighth grader, and they said that they have a Google meet each day with three of their six teachers, and they switch off to check in and talk about assignments. And then they spend about three hours a day on schoolwork. They really liked math, how you can watch a video and then like look back on it if you were confused or anything. And then they also like that you can pace yourself and go at your own pace with their schoolwork. And then they do not like science labs and not seeing friends. So for me, I spend around four to five hours on schoolwork a day, but I think it really depends on your classes at the high school, because obviously some classes have had to slow down a little bit, like art classes. And we have Google meets as needed. So some teachers have had a lot of Google meets, some teachers have had very few. I really like math, because we can watch the videos. So same as in the middle school, where if you get confused, you can look back and stuff. And our, for my AP classes, the studying for the AP tests have been pretty easy, because we've already learned everything. And so now it's just review, and the online review is not bad at all. And then I don't like, and I miss my teachers and friends, and then also I get distracted easily sometimes. But overall, I've learned a lot of time management skills and self motivation. So it's been good. Yeah.
Great. You answered the question I was gonna ask you, what skills are you gaining from this that you want otherwise? And you answered that in that last sentence with the time.
Yeah.
Organizational skills. Those are really important skills that you'll need in future endeavors in your life. So
Yeah, for sure.
Are there other questions or comments from board members for Claire?
I'd just like to ask Claire, is there anything that you feel like you hope to see go forward when we get back together? Something that you've learned during distance learning, or a way that you've experienced learning during this time that you think, hey, this would be great if we incorporated this going forward? Do you have any insights for us at this point?
Yeah, I think that the math stuff, I think it might be cool for at least some math classes to have videos as the assignment, as like the homework, and then you can ask like questions about the homework. So videos about the lesson, and then maybe in school, do the homework and ask questions that way. I think that would be helpful, because then you kind of get help on only the things you really need. And then I also think that teachers making more like AP online review stuff available could be something we could have in the future. So yeah.
Yeah, great. Thanks. Scott, I see you're still with us. Claire was not able to reach out to a Wildwood student. Can you give us a quick overview of how things are going at Wildwood with distance learning? You could unmute yourself too, and we hear more.
Yeah, unmute, then you can hear me better.
Yeah.
Although my family says I'm kind of loud, so, no, not that loud. Yeah, so we use, we use a platform called CSO, which is a little bit different than Google Classroom. It's everything goes into, flows into one, one platform. So if you want to think of it like a, kind of like a, like a Facebook for students that, you know, highly regulated by the teachers, obviously, it's not as public. But yeah, it's going really well. We're seeing some really cool things. Students are, you know, kind of the same thing they're seeing in upper levels, they're really being creative. And the thing they love the most is checking in with their teacher. They love seeing the morning meetings. Our teachers do a morning meeting every single morning, and they like seeing their faces. And we've just really pounded home that we want to make connections with families, and we want to make those individual connections as much as possible. So, and it's cool, I saw, I've heard really great things from both families, teachers, and, and students, so.
Great. Thank you, Claire, and thank you, Scott, for sharing how things were going with the distance learning. Next on our agenda, we have discussion information items. The item we have is the board member calendar, which was included in your packet, which at this point in time is not very exciting. There's not a lot we can do or go to or be involved with. MAF board will still be meeting, I see, coming up on Monday. And then I think in order, these other meetings might be in the same format, the Zoom, but you can see in that schedule there, some things have moved to tentative, and some things might be online. Are there anything in particular board members like to call out? Kevin, why don't you start us off?
I have a question in regards to, like, looking at the AMSD meeting. I'm assuming that's a Zoom meeting.
I don't think they've announced how they're doing those meetings yet. Mike, do you know? You used to be on their, their board.
They're thinking of, they're, they're thinking about the May 1st meeting being online. So
Thinking about it.
Yeah, they haven't decided how it's gonna go forward yet. They canceled the April one. But they're thinking about doing some live online thing for the first. That's all I know right now. Isn't that right, Barb? So is that something that, that the link could be sent out to the rest of us? Because sometimes we go to the AMSD stuff as well. I don't know why it wouldn't be.
Right.
But if somebody gets something, we'll send it around. You bet.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Any other questions or things people want to call out on the calendar? I do want to reiterate for the public that in Barb's communication today about the school calendar for the rest of the year, anything that's marked as a no school day, like Memorial Day and other things, will still be no school days, even with the distance learning. So we have a couple of those coming up too for, for families. All right, let's keep moving. Let's go on to action items. Item, the first item is approval of Monamie High School and Middle School roofing, steel cladding project bid. And is Julie with us, or Barbie?
No, she's not. So I'm going to do this for you. And it is, it's in your packet. You heard about this project at the facilities meeting, I think at the board meeting as well, regarding the middle school addition experiencing water intrusion on that ramp, hallway, gymnasium, wall classroom. You saw the pictures of that as well. So the bids were received for the project on April 9. And the recommendation, you have the summary of the recommendation from the Garland Company recommending that we award the bid to, sorry, Atomic Sheet Metal. And so I just need to read this again. Let me just confirm. Oh, and I also want to point out that the project is funded from the long-term facility maintenance budget. But I think that's all that you needed in terms of a report. So I told, I told Julie that I thought I could do this. And so hopefully, that was the case.
Kevin has a question. Go ahead, Kevin.
Move approval, actually.
Oh, that works too. I have a motion for approval from Kevin. Julie, second, any discussion about the bid, the approval process, the great presentation by Barb? All right, Kevin?
Kevin?
Yeah.
As I understand, we've used them in the past. And the, again, not that it matters in the actual accepting of the bid, because we have a process for that, but the company is local, so.
Oh, good.
That is thanks, yes.
All right, we'll go to a roll call vote. Julie, go ahead.
Mike Chevalier, you'll have to unmute, Mike.
Aye.
Thank you. Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Judy Schwartz?
Aye.
Stacy Stowe?
Aye.
Lucy Payne?
And the chair is aye, so that motion carries. So that will move forward. Thank you very much, Barb, for pointing that. Next, we have approval of policies. So these next two action items on our agenda, the approval of policies and the school district calendar are items left from the March meeting that we decided to table in case there was public comment that we would need on these items. So I don't believe we received any public comment on the policies. So Barbara, if you want to go ahead and present those, we'll move those forward.
And I don't, I have, I received no public comment, and, and the board, when we discussed this, we had no questions about these. So I'm just recommending that we approve these, these policies and move them forward.
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Mike Chevalier. Second, taken by Stacy Stout. Any discussion on the group of policies listed on the agenda?
I am happy to see that under general statement of policy 2C, item one, that the language that denotes a certain gender in the policy has been removed.
We'll see 504.
Yeah, 504, I'm sorry. Yep.
Yes. Any other comments or questions? So we had a motion and a second. And so now it's time for roll call. Julie?
Okay, Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Judy Schwartz?
Aye.
Stacy Stowe?
Aye.
And Lucy Payne?
The chair is aye, so motion carries. Those policies will move forward as approved and be added to the website. We have approval of the 21, 22 school district calendar. So not this coming up year, but the following year. We're trying to approve.
We're trying to approve calendar and musical. So um Barb, why don't you go ahead and start?
Sure. I just thought I'd kick this off before you have your discussion um about the calendar and just kind of give an overview for the public about how how this all um came to be and why we're talking about it this evening. So um when we build a school calendar, there is a calendar committee, a district calendar committee. And the kinds of considerations that are made when creating a calendar have to do with um holidays, spring break, begin and end of school, but also um terms when when quarters or semesters um begin and end because there's there's time built in for teachers to um to work through uh the the planning and the grading that that is included with that change of term. Um, we also look to have our quarters and semesters um have approximately the same number of days as close as we can within reason. And so that's another part to how we place our days. Um, we also include professional learning, professional development for our staff. And um and so that is part of when we place those days, we're considering how long each term, um whether semester, quarter, how long that is and in where we place those. So um other things we try, we try to make it so that we don't have um we don't have, you know, just a one-day week, for example, would not be a great use of our time. Um, and so part of this is dictated by um holidays and part of it is just where um the term ends and and those things fall. And so that's part of how we we put that together. Um, the study session on the 12th, uh our principals came forward to talk about what we had, what was discussed at the calendar committee. Um, in particular, um and we'll go through each of these individually. But in particular, there was a lot of discussion about elementary assessment days. Currently, we have kindergarten has um two days for assessments prior to the school year starting. And um the proposal that you have before you is to have that for all of our um all of our K5 um students and teachers. Um, the reason for this is that we do have our all of our elementary teachers spend a good deal of time assessing their students at the beginning of the school year. And what in order to do that, um need to lose some instructional time. There's a lot of use of subs substitute teachers, guest teachers, um to help with those assessments. They spend about 30 to 45 minutes completing those assessments during for each student during that first start of the school year. And so as a result, um they wait to form instructional groups that they that they typically would do based on that data. So the proposal for that um the assessment day is for September 7th and 8th for all of K5. The purpose of that is to um build that individual connection with the student, teacher, and family right at the beginning of the year during those first two days where they'll have scheduled times for um students and families to come and meet, you know, with the individual teacher. Um, we can talk more about that, but the idea then is um in the the current model, again, they they start their small group guided reading instruction in um by the end of October, beginning of November. And in this way, they'll be able to start it much sooner, right at the beginning of the school year. So so they have done a lot of work and uh Scott and Susie are still here if you have follow-up questions about that. Um, also, there are um some other differences here with this calendar was to um start changing the way the schedule for, I think this is the first year that the first year we would be starting changing the way we do the timing of curriculum nights. So that's something that has is would be starting and there's still more discussion about how to use curriculum nights going forward based on the strategic plan um that's in place for all of our schools. And so we're not that far along on that, but that's something that would evolve. Um, there are also on here some late starts that are scheduled in here and that was recommended from the calendar committee. We can talk a little bit more about that, having a few late start days during the school year so that teachers can look at their assessment data throughout the year. Um, and lastly, one other thing that we can talk about is um election day. Um, as you know, we do have right now, O H Anderson is an election, um is a voting site. And so when students are in session during those times, it can be um complicated. And so that's another another one we can talk about. Um, so that's my kind of my intro of what we discussed at our study session. Um, my recommendation for having the discussion about the calendar is to kind of piece it apart the way I just kind of laid it out and start by discussing um the assessment days as part of as because that would be a change. Um, and so I'd like to start by having that discussion to see of your thoughts and perspectives on that.
Oh, um Barb, do you want to discuss this or should we move it for approval first and then have the discussion?
Sorry, you, yes, that that makes the most sense. I'm I'm I went down my list, but yes, there are there are protocols, so.
So um if I have a motion to approve the calendar, and remember, even if we make a motion to approve this calendar, we can um still not approve this calendar or we can amend the motion to change the calendar within in that time. But really, according to our our operating procedures, we should make a motion to approve the calendar first and then have that discussion. So I'm looking for a motion to move this forward to discussion through a motion to approve the calendar.
I move approval. Judy Schwartz.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
And second, Julie. So now let's have that discussion that Barb's laid out so nicely for us. And Mike, you had your hand up. So did you want to start with a comment? We're only talking to start with about the assessment days, those um new days that we've added at the beginning of the calendar year for grades one through five. Okay, Mike, did you have something you would put your hand up before? So I was just checking.
Nope. It doesn't look like it.
Okay. Does anyone have anything about the assessment days they'd like to discuss? We're feeling pretty good about those. Stacy, go ahead.
So I I do have some concerns. I think um I, first of all, find I I, you know, we've discussed this idea in the years past. And I think the hardest part of it is that it's not just, you know, two days where the the teachers are are away from the students. It's where there's a required 30-minute or 20 or 30-minute appointment for each student to come in. And so I worry that that's a real hardship on working parents. I'm really sensitive to the issue, given what we're going through right now. And people will have probably limited uh vacation time. And so, you know, I I think I've suggested before, I, you know, obviously, um the calendar discussion at the study session was while I was away. So um I'm sorry, I'm just not getting to share all of this. But I think it would be really worth our time to think through, is there another way to do this so that there's more opportunities in the evening? Um, I know that in the when uh Suzie and Scott presented, they did share what had been the results from the kindergarten assessment. And I went and looked at those charts. And I think while it's, you know, it it has good feedback, there is some hardship for at least and look at where their child was while during that time. And they did either have to get childcare or have a family member or somebody help out. And so I just think it's really important for the school calendar to really reflect what's best for everybody in the district because that's that's who we serve. And that's so so I just I want to really call attention to that because I know I've said this in the past, but you know, there's that Thursday evening before the back-to-school night. And, you know, I don't know why that couldn't be part of an option as to say, instead of everybody showing up at the school at the same time, what about making that where there's appointments? And then still, you know, I'm still open to the idea of having a the daytime slot. I don't know if we want to start with two days. I just think it's really important that we are being mindful of, at least according to the kindergarten survey, at least 60% of our families in our district.
Barb, do you want to respond to that or have principals respond to some of her concerns?
Suzie or or Scott, can you jump in there?
Yeah, definitely. So I think, you know, um I I hear I hear your your concerns, Stacy, um with that as well. And, you know, um I think one of the things that we're looking at is that first day on that September 7th, having it in 11 to 7 or maybe we do a um on that September 7th is in our proposal. Um, and then keeping the September 8th at that eight to four, um because that that following date is the first day of school. So that's kind of why we were thinking that piece. But we were hoping that that 12 to 8 on September 7th or 11 to 7 would provide some flexibility for families. But I do hear what you're you're saying, Stacy, that um we want to make sure that um families are able to do this. Um, in some of the districts that I've been a part of some of these assessment days, if families cannot make it, um then what the teacher would do is do that in the beginning of the school year. But it is more manageable when you only have five kids to do instead of 25 to do the assessment for. So there still is the option for families that can't sign up for that, that they can do it when school starts um with that as well. So, you know, I think um our our elementary team that kind of created this proposal really wants want to be uh respectful and flexible with families and their uh needs as well.
Any other questions or comments about the assessment days? Okay, um the next piece, Barb, do you have another piece you want to go to next?
Um, yes, so we um also talked about late starts. Um, I'm missing, sorry about this.
Did we have some public comment, things we want to address next?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't include that on my um. So, yes, so we had some public comment around um the February and uh the January and February. Um, and sorry, let me look at it. There it is. Sorry. Okay, I did write down. So the four-day weekend. So we had some public comments around four-day weekends um in January and February. And um and I looked at that February, the February 11th. If you look at your at your uh calendar on February 11th, um I I believe after asking a a couple of people who have been on the calendar committee for a while, um I believe that February 11th date uh is there would typically um be part of a four-day weekend uh with President's Day. But because in 2021, President's Day is so late, can you see that? Is everyone kind of tracking with me here? Because 20 in 2021, President's Day is so late, if we move that February 11th instead to February 18th, then that would have a four-day weekend. And I and February 11th does not match up with um any of our um end-of-term. Uh, it's not an end-of-term. And so um it can it can be moved to that February 18th as a professional learning day, and it would provide that four-day weekend that um we heard from parents during the during the public comment that we received. And I think that would address that need.
Stacy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just would like to say that I, if we're able to do that, I think we should because it is, it, as you said, we've heard from parents. And again, I think the schedule should reflect what's best, not only what the teachers' needs are, but also how we can be serving our community. I think parents, they do set a lot of their life's schedule around the school schedule. And so it seems like we should be really thoughtful as to what would be something that helps them if they're taking time off work, that they can make it a more meaningful time for their family. So uh I I would like to make a motion to amend this, to move to strike the date of February 11th and add it as February 18th.
So Stacy's made a motion to amend the motion on the floor to move that date. Kevin?
Okay.
Kevin, a second in that motion. Is there any discussion around Stacy's motion of making that change February 11th, staff development day and conference day moving to February 18th? Kevin?
Um, kind of to echo Stacy's thoughts, um this idea of being sensitive to the needs of our families, I think is important. I think that uh we we look at some of the things we do that I would like to include that parent voice. And we heard the parent voice kind of after the fact in some of these communications that came out. Um, but in any event, I'm I'm definitely sympathetic, even though I don't I don't have, my kids are all well beyond uh uh Monmouth High Schools. Uh, again, as board members, we are that liaison between uh community stakeholders and the organization Monmouth High School. So I am sympathetic and understanding uh of of parent schedules.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or discussion on Stacy's motion? So we do have a motion to amend the motion. Um, and so we do need to do a roll call vote to see if that would that change would be in effect for for the motion on the table. So Julie, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, um Mike Chevalier.
So wait a second, I'm sorry. I just want to be clear. We're only voting on this amendment. We're not voting on the full calendar yet, just the amendment. Sorry to interrupt you, Mike. Go ahead, Julie.
Mike Chevalier.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Julie McGraw, aye. Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stowe.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
The chair is aye as well, so that motion carries, that amendment to the motion carries. And so now the motion on the floor includes that change. So Barb, where would you like to go next in the calendar?
Okay, so then um next we have late starts. We have, and this is new in this calendar. Um, and right now we have listed October 6th, February 2nd, and April 6th as the three um late starts that we had talked about at the study session. Um, and so, you know, in in general, and and once again, Suzie and Scott, if you want to jump in on this, that's great. Um, we're talking about late these three days of late starts to provide opportunities for stu for teachers to um collaborate around the um the data that they they collect throughout the year. Um, at the secondary, um it's an opportunity for our um arc our 612 vertical teaming by departments. Um, so that is how the secondary has talked about wanting to to use these times so that they could do some vertical planning. Um, and so those are the three and and the reason why they are being proposed. Of course, the the challenge is, and we heard this, um that uh it can be complicated for for families to to because they are all on Wednesdays and it just disrupts their um day. And for those who are their work are working families, so um we know that that can be a challenge. Um, other things to to note, it was brought up after our study session. Um, in the past couple of weeks, it was brought up that February 2nd. When you look at the February 2nd date, that that um lands kind of in the midst of um a string of weeks that have um four-day weeks. So there's a four-day week at it, three, four-day weeks in January. Um, and then we, as we just talked about that February, now it's February 18th, there's the four-day weekend. So that February 2nd late start um is right around the same time as we have a number of other shortened weeks. And so that was brought up as a concern. And so I'll leave it there as those, that's what I've heard. I don't know, Scott or Suzie, do you have anything else to add?
So before Scott or Suzie start, could I ask you or Scott and Suzie in their presentation to talk how um these days would benefit students and how they might align to the strategic plan? For the work of the strategic strategic plan?
Yes, so I can I can um start with that. One of the things that when we look at our professional development through um the calendar, um a lot of it was not very balanced about when it happens. And one of the things that we want to really do is have that regular look at data. When we have fresh data with kids, what I want teachers to be able to do is to be able to analyze that data and say, how should my instruction be changed? Um, sometimes, just by the way the calendar fits, um we, there's a delay in it and sometimes that's old data. Where I really want that ongoing um analyzing of data for teachers because what we want is, once they analyze that data, to know what are student strengths, where are goals? So that when they're doing small group instruction and and at the elementary level, we're doing guided reading and guided math, we can really hone in on what are their specific goals and make sure that they're we're meeting their needs where they're at and appropriately challenging them. So that's kind of was the um the need that we saw is how do we use that data um regularly? So these are aligned with some of our data windows as well. So that was one of the pieces. And and I think um the strategic plan really talks about knowing, you know, having kids know who they are and how do we appropriately challenge, bring out passions. Um, and and some of that comes through with this And some of that comes through with this data.
We also talked a lot about making sure that we're very intentional in our language. You know, right now it's listed as professional development. And so you can see, it says professional learning, data day, and then like. So professional learning and professional time are two different things. Professional time is like planning and preparation, and professional learning is really more intentional. So we wanted to be really intentional about what the teachers were doing during that time. So something else that we talked about where this would give us some time to really look at our goals for our building. And be really intentional about what kind of training we're providing our teachers.
Thank you. So any questions or comments about the late start days for the student data reviews? Stacy, go ahead.
So I have concerns with this. I certainly appreciate the professional learning and the need for that and how well this time will be used. And I understand that it's meant for the students. My concerns are, one, as already been mentioned, it's on a Wednesday morning. It can be very difficult for working parents. And again, I'll echo what I said earlier, especially given the time that we're going through. I really don't want to make these hardworking parents have to think about three more days throughout the year. That they have to use up their precious vacation time if they don't have someone else who can help them. And so I just really think we need to be mindful about what are we thinking of all the alternatives here? As to how we can meet this need for the professional learning and the data discussion. And yet also not make it at the expense of parents. Because it seems like all the options, all the things that we're making changes to in the coming year, if none of the edit, if none of the amendments were to go through. Are really at the expense of parents and family time. So we need to balance that. I would also point out that we're paying for a full, we're paying for busing for all of those days. But we're not getting student time as a full day. Now granted, I get that those discussions are for the betterment of the teaching and the student. But we're paying for busing as we would for a full day, but only getting a partial day of class time. I think. There's also the thought about, in other districts that have done this. They had something else going on during that time, either enrichment learning, or they had community ed classes that were offered. Or they had, you know, they made sure there was childcare. And I think, given our strategic plan, there's so many things that we could think of that maybe we could do instead so that it's actually not a late start. It's kids, everybody still shows up on time. But the school, because of all these other things that we're thinking through and thinking, oh man, it wouldn't it be great if we were doing these other things with our students? That we use that time for that? So I really feel strongly that we need to do something differently here. I don't know if this is something we would want to say, you know, we want to think about doing this at some point. But only once we've found a way to make a better use of the time that the students are at the school during those two hours.
So before Barbara, Susie or Scott replies, I do want to remind her that we're looking at the calendar, not for this coming academic year, but the following year. So by that point, hopefully COVID is long behind us and the vacation issues that have come up will be long in the past in terms of concern about that time. So you did raise a number of questions and things that I'm hoping Barb or Scott or Susie can reply to.
And I think, okay, so the question, was there a question or was there a recommend? I think I heard it was a recommendation to wait.
Well, yes, and also to really see if we, if at some point, I would like to say, let's take these off the calendar. And then if at a point you say, you know, we thought of a way that we can actually use those two hours so we can still get kids to school on time. This is a way we'll use it. You know, there's a lot of, I think, opportunities through the strategic plan. And then come back to us, we could always say, yes, we can add that in. I mean, we're a year and a half out still. So if that were to say, like in a month or two, that you come back and say, so I want to say I'm open to this idea. I just, I don't like the idea of it being a late start. I'd really like to find a way for this professional learning to happen, not at the expense of families. And the student time, we're paying for a full day of busing. I really don't want to lose that time. So I guess I'll just go ahead and make an emotion.
Who might go first? I think Frank was going to add something. Stacy.
So this is a rather fluid document, right?
So that is an important point, Mike, that you made that I meant to make at the beginning of this. That we hope to approve a calendar tonight at some point in time. But it is a fluid document in the sense that we can revisit the calendar at any point in time. And we do, on a regular basis, go back and do calendar revisions, whether it be because we've had snow days or because we've learned something else or distance learning has come in. But we do change the calendar at different points in the year. I would be concerned about adding things, you know, we got to think about timelines for parents if they do need to find childcare and things like that. So I'd have that consideration. But go ahead, Mike, finish your comment.
I was just saying, it's a fluid document and if there's a way we could, if it has to be approved today. Understanding that if we did approve it, that we would be still looking at it to make the change in line with what Stacy's talking about over time. Make it more accessible for the parents' schedules and not as disruptive to their families.
Right, so it is a document we could approve and that we could change in the future, you're right.
That's all.
I think Stacy's got a motion, I will make sure there's no other conversation or things we need to address first.
I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Julie.
So what other time would you propose that teachers could do this?
To look at the data?
Yeah.
I think, well, I think Susie mentioned, but Susie, you can jump in a little bit here too. Is that, I think, what the principals and the calendar committee were suggesting is that the timing of these late starts. Align with the assessment windows. And so there are times when they can look at the data, but it won't be at, you know, it won't be as fresh, it won't be as timely. I think is what Susie was just talking about. Am I right?
Yep, that's correct. And I think the piece, just when you're looking and analyzing data, it takes a little longer time. So we have regular PLCs that are about, you know, 50 minutes in the morning. But that's not enough time to dig deep and to really analyze. And when we're analyzing the data, what I'm having my teachers do is really look at that data. They're making guided reading groups, they're figuring out goals for their students. And then we're also determining win groups, students that might need interventions or extensions. So it is a little bit more timely process. And so some of the other ways schools have done this is, again, using guest teachers sometimes to do these data digs for half days. And I, you know, I think what we're trying to do is how do we build a system where our teachers are in front of kids, you know, the most that we can. You know, the strength of a regular classroom teacher versus a guest teacher is obviously really strong. So that's one of the pieces that we were discussing. And then I think also, you know, Stacy had spoken about like, what do other school districts do? And I think we had some of that in our proposal, is sometimes community ed offers classes for those, some of those passion pieces. When we had late starts in some of the other districts. And I know at the high school level, sometimes they have speakers, like career speakers coming in, real professionals like from Anderson Windows, talking about engineering for optional pieces as well for kids to look at that. So, you know, I totally understand Stacy's concerns and, you know, with that. This was just a need that was brought up from that calendar committee. And I know Lynn, Scott, Courtney, and Mike and Kathy all were a part of developing this.
I just wanted to add that too. I was listening to Stacy on the concerns too on that. Having other opportunities for the students to be able to do things on those late start days is what you're kind of looking for. So that they will have a chance to.
Lynn, we can't really hear you. Sorry, I thought it would, yeah. Can you turn?
Okay, am I unmuted? Can you hear me now?
We can hear a little bit, but just can you turn, you're very quiet.
Okay, let me try to turn up here. Okay, is that better?
Little bit.
All right. I was just going to say that I really understand that if you'd like us to look for other opportunities for the kids to be able to participate in during those late start days. I can certainly bring that back to the calendar committee and look at what could be other options for them too.
Any other questions or?
I guess I'll go ahead and make, I'd like to make a motion that we take them off the calendar at this point. And then with the direction that Barb and Lynn and they take it back and see if there's a way to. Offer some other alternative during that time. And then by August, we look at it and we can add them at that point if there's a good option. So the motion is to strike the dates as of now.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, Kevin?
I think Judy had it before me.
Sorry, Judy, go ahead.
No, I want to second that.
Okay, Judy, second, so we have amendment to the motion to strike all three assessment day, or late start days for the assessment look. Any other discussion? Kevin?
So I don't want to get too long-winded on this, but this is something that we looked at, several, this board looked at, those that were on the board looked at a few years ago. And at the time, we didn't move forward with it precisely for some of the discussion points that were brought up about. What opportunities do we have for kids that aren't able to work? The families aren't able to work this into their schedule easily. And I don't think, you know, we didn't, since that discussion years ago, I don't think we've gotten any further along on that particular question. And, you know, for me, again, I do not have kids anymore at Montomede High Schools. But I am looking at this as that person, the school board member in between, as a representative of the stakeholders. And so many of our stakeholders are dual, working families. And so this does present a hardship for them. And I remember in the day when we did, it was a struggle to figure out how we were going to get it to work. So, you know, my questions. Are, is the outcome worthy of the family disruption? And I believe at the study session, the last study session, we talked about that. That was the question I posed on you, Susie and Scott, was what about families? And I'm concerned, right? I might have been the only one that really kind of had some concerns on that at the time. So that is the one thing, is the outcome worthy of the family disruption? The second part of that is, is there another way to get the desired outcomes? Right, is there another way of doing it? We just, I think somehow, we need to have. We need to look at this. And so I, again, I'm in favor of striking it and then walking backwards to see if there are some other options. To answer some of these questions. But, you know, one of the things I guess I wonder is. I mean, how many hours is the current proposal? We're looking to get two hours out of this, is that correct?
Two hours for each one, is that what you mean?
Yep.
Two hour late start each one.
Yep, so the staff would, so they would be getting two hours, not, they wouldn't even be, they wouldn't be starting earlier though.
Well, they would have. Can you help me understand what your question is? They would have two hours that they wouldn't otherwise have.
If staff started at seven and school started at nine, they'd have that two hours. Is that a possibility? Or am I just, I'm not on the calendar committee, so forgive my naivete on this, but would that work?
I think I don't really want to dig into it in that way in this, I mean.
Understood.
So, but your point being that.
Are there other options?
Are there other options is what you'd like us to explore? And what I also heard was, in order to bring this back, if we do decide to bring this back, we need to also share with you. Other options that would work and why we're not, why we wouldn't recommend those over this. I mean, the idea that, because I did hear, for example, Susie mentioned that. There is a way to get this time and it requires pulling teachers out of the classroom and using substitute teachers. And so there is a way, the calendar committee is recommending that that's not preferable. However, the other part, so you'd like us to think more about that and are there other options? The other thing I hear you saying is that if we do bring it back, we also need to bring back ways that kids can still come in. And have lots of other options for what they could be doing during the time that teachers are meeting. And potentially that could be through community ed or other ways, whether it.
Some options, maybe not lots of, but some options.
Some options, so that we can, so that we can recommend that. So that's what I'm hearing that you would like us to do if we were to bring that back.
Correct.
Okay.
I just like to add, from just a personal experience, that when my kids were at OH. We had the experience where there were weeks that the teachers weren't there because of all those kinds of meetings that the teachers were pulled out. And it was extremely disruptive. And so I would almost prefer a late start to teachers being pulled out. So this conversation could go on and on. And when we had it two years ago, we asked that a new idea be brought back. And so I feel bad that that wasn't relayed to you because this is kind of the same proposal that we had the last time.
Okay.
And I'm sorry that we didn't have better feedback for you at the study session.
Okay.
So Scott or Susie, we talked in calendar committee about some of these things. So there were some other options looked at. You presented the one about substitute teachers. Were there others, I don't remember off the top of my head, of things that people, that you considered in this process? So I think, I think the committee did do their work. I think they did do some of that, but we haven't communicated as clearly as we could have. So Susie, I think you're going to address that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we did talk on the proposal at early release and kind of that full day piece. But we're really trying to be mindful of the amount of minutes needed, especially at the secondary level. So that's why we were looking at that ongoing professional development. And we also did look at that early release time as well. So those were some other options that we did look at as well.
So what you're saying though is that you did respond to what the board asked. And that the other options that you looked at were not as favorable as the one that we have in front of us. Is that a fair summary?
I would say that's what the subcommittee thought, yeah, that worked on that.
Thank you. Stacy, you had your hand up, can you go ahead?
Yeah, so I just want to point out, I'm glad that other options were discussed, but they weren't discussed with any parent input. So there were lots of options. And yes, this committee thinks that late start is the best one, but the committee didn't include any parent voice. So that's where my concern is. I think early release would probably be more, would be at least better received by families if it were not in the middle of the week. But again, I really go back to, if we're paying for a full day of busing, I'd like to be using that opportunity. I'd love to see an opportunity there, especially if it ties back to the strategic plan. So that we're not paying for a full day of busing and only getting a partial day of class time.
So Barb, can I ask a clarifying question around that? We get credit for the full day though, it's not enough missed time for it not to count as a day. Because we're counting by statute days and minutes. And so Stacy's right, we lose minutes, but we don't lose a day.
Yeah, it's not losing a day, it is losing minutes. And we would still be even with these, we would be over the number of minutes that we need for all levels. And that was part of the consideration as well. So it's not that we lose funding, so that is true.
Okay, Stacy, you're going to begin, I'll make sure that someone else has a comment, because you've spoken twice now to this issue. Does anyone else have anything they want to share? Stacy, oh, Mike, go ahead.
I don't, I don't know if I have anything really to share as much as just say that. I know that if I was inconvenienced as a working parent, I would do my best just to do it. To be in line with what the school district does. I mean, I don't know how much, I don't want to inconvenience parents, but at the same time, I don't want to be placating a lot of people too. And I don't mean that badly, I just, there's only so much that can be done. And there's got to be a point where someone understands that. there's got to be a, a point where someone understands that. And if it was my, if I was inconvenienced by it in some way, it was a hassle, I would do it anyway because it's, it's important to, you know, to me, for the kids. But at the same time, but that's, I'm just making, making a statement right now. I, I would make time for that. So I'm saying, but I know what this might not be able to.
Thank you for sharing that. Judy, did you have any comments? I can't see your hands.
Yeah, I don't have my hand up.
Okay.
I would hope that, I would hope that we could find a way to not have late starts, but I agree that there's complications.
Okay. So Stacy, you have one, another comment?
Well, I just wanted to point out, I, I'm not as concerned about if we're meeting the minutes or what the, the funding piece of it in that sense. I, that wasn't my point. My point is, we're paying for students to get to school. And I just would love to make an opportunity there. I just, I, I think that it would be a missed opportunity if we didn't at least try. And so I just wanted to, to comment to that point.
Any other comments before we do a vote? I do want to thank you, Stacy, for bringing this forward. I, I hear all sides of it. And if this motion were to fail, because I will probably be voting against the motion to amend to take these off, because I'd like to propose a different motion. And my motion I would propose is to remove maybe one or two of them to at least give us a start in this area to see how it works before we shoot it down completely. So if this motion should fail, I, I would hope to make that motion. But if this should pass, then we would move forward from that point. So if there are no other comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Go ahead, Julie.
Do you need to be clear on what you're voting on? Do you want to just say it again? Because you, okay.
Thank you so much. So what we're voting on now is the amendment to the motion. So the amendment from Stacy was to remove all three of these days from the calendar as is proposed. Julie, go ahead.
Okay, voting on the amendment, Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Lucy Payne.
Move out nay, but the motion carries. So Barb, do you have enough direction from the conversation in terms of next steps for that?
I think so. I think so. And can I get a nod from Lynn, Scott and Susie? We feel like we have enough? I think so. I think we do. Yeah.
Okay.
Great. I'm going to bring up a, I'm going to bring up a, just a fine point that I just want to bring attention to. I believe when the calendar committee proposed these late starts, they had talked about April 6th. And when they did, that is right around the same time as the end of a term for middle school. Middle school has quarter classes. Most of their classes, even though they have quarters where they report grades, most of their classes continue on during that times because that's, that's the mid, that's mid-quarter for them. I'd want to point out that we do have quarter classes at the middle school that end at that time. And so those teachers who are, are, are kind of what we call our wheel teachers who end right, right on, well, in that case would be April 8th, do have some professional responsibilities to, I'll just say, close out one class and prepare for the next. And without that April 6th day, there really isn't that time built in because typically we would have April 8th as a, as a professional learning slash professional planning. What are we calling them now? Professional work, professional time, professional time. Sorry, thanks. Read your lips. So we would no longer have that professional time for those teachers at that time in April. And I bring that up because the calendar committee specifically moved an April 8th professional day to October 20th to get more, I hope I'm doing this right, I'm looking, I'm watching your faces, to move that up so that we had, we had professional learning earlier in the year. There might be, it might be the case that the calendar committee would like it, without the late start dates, would might, might want to come back and say, move that October 20th back to April 8th. And I don't know if we're at that point that we'd want to do that now or not. So Lynn or Scott or Susie, is that something else we should consider at this time? Again, is moving October 20th professional day back to April 8th, which was, if we had rolled the calendar forward, that's where it would have landed.
Yeah, I, I think we should consider that. I mean, I don't know, we, we could always bring it back. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I think we should consider it. We can always bring it back, but it would give then the middle school that have the quarter classes a chance to actually do some of the work at that point, that they were thinking they would be able to balance out with the later start. So I think it would be something we should look at.
So based on that feedback, I'll make the motion to move that October 20th, make an amendment to the motion on the floor to move October 20th back to April 8th. Stacy?
Oh, I'm sorry, you have to get a second, I guess. I'll wait.
Okay.
I was, I was moving toward discussion.
Mike, second motion from Lucy and a second from Mike to amend the motion to add, to move October 20th to April 8th. So now discussion, I think Stacy's ready for discussion.
I was just going to say, is this something that could wait if, because if, if we do end up considering the other issue at a later date and then making them, because we can always change the calendar at a later date. So I just throw that out there. I, I don't know if, if somebody feels strongly that needs to move tonight. I, I'm not opposed. I just wondered if, if it needs to happen.
I think my only thought on this is that we were pretty clear that we wanted, I'm sorry, I didn't wait to be recognized, but we were pretty clear that we wanted to get this calendar done. So if I back up from the beginning, this conversation has been that we need to get this calendar out early enough for parents to be able to plan. So that is why we, when we had this conversation, we made it, like, when we started this conversation back in the fall, we said, this is going to be for the, not, it's going to be for the 21, 22 calendar, because we wanted people to have enough time to plan. And so the only reason I'm suggesting or concerned about this and feeling like we need to move it now is that that October 20th makes a very long MEA weekend. And if there's the possibility that people would jump on planning, see that and jump on planning and then to undo it, that would be my one concern about. I'm not so concerned about the April 8th day as much as I am it at this moment about the October 20th. So that's why I bring it up.
And I move the motion because I'm concerned about, or, or thinking of streamlining the work that if staff and Barb administrators decide not to bring back those late start days this year, and it gets pushed off into the future because we're busy with COVID or other things that are happening, we don't have to revisit the calendar again. And so there could be a chance it saves us a step. But if we have to revisit to consider those days at, at some point, because there's a different presentation, then we can both those things at the same time, move this day back to October 20th and then put those days back on the calendar. Any other questions or discussions about the amendment to the motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. We are voting on moving October 20th professional learning day back to April 8th at this point in time. So it's just that amendment we're voting on. Julie, when you're ready.
Okay, Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout. Was that an aye? Stacy?
Aye.
Okay.
Yes, aye.
Lucy Payne.
Sorry, it's complicated.
The chair is aye, so the motion carries. So we've made a number of tweaks to the calendar. Barb, I think we've got one more thing you want to discuss before we move on with the calendar?
I do. So it was brought up our November 2nd day that we have there. We had November 2nd as a professional development. Sorry, I'm looking for November 2nd. I want to use the right term, staff professional day on November 2nd. And the reason we put, and it's on a Tuesday. And the reason we put it there is because it's Election Day and in 2021. And that we have OH as a site, a, a voting site. And so for security reasons, we were recommending moving our, what would typically be November 5th, Friday, November 5th is typically the day that we would have for professional development. We were recommending moving it to the 2nd so that we could not have students in the building on Election Day at OH. The, the, it was pointed out to me that the that we would not be necessarily terribly busy on, in 2021 potentially for voting. And so we, we are able to manage, I think, when it's a smaller election, we, we are concerned, I will say, about this fall, this, this election, 2020. And we can talk, let's talk about that another time and, and that day for elementaries. But that was why we were moving to, to go towards that day instead of the 5th. And so I want to put that out there as a conversation for you so that you can weigh in, I guess.
Any questions or comments about November Professional Development Day? Kevin, go ahead.
It makes perfect sense to me.
Thank you. Stacy?
I, I'm sorry. So I'm, are you wanting to change it to the 5th for that year? Is that what you're thinking?
I am saying that that has been brought up as a conversation. So I wanted you to consider it, only if you want to consider it. I am not recommending. We are, our recommendation was to have that, the Tuesday, the 2nd as the professional learning day because it means then kids will not be in the buildings. And then because it's a OH in particular, our concern for, for security on that day for OH. And so we were recommending, and in fact, moving forward that we start having that as our professional day as opposed to the 5th or that Friday.
I would, I would just point out, since it is only Pine Springs, since it's OH, it might be worth checking if they don't have an election. You know, in Matamita, there might be a city council election, but that wouldn't affect Pine Springs. So if Pine Springs doesn't have an election, we could always, again, that's another thing, if, if you were to find that out in the next month or two, I don't think it would matter too much to change it if we changed it by August or September. And let's be honest, I doubt people are making plans a year out from now at this point because of the situation we're in. So, so I think it, I would just ask that you would do a little research on if there's actually an election for Pine Springs and, and then that would help determine if you really want to keep it at that day or not.
Any other questions or comments on the Election Day?
So we talked about this one other time. Did, we did decide that we were not going to have students in the building for this fall, right? Or you're saying we're going to discuss that another time?
You know what, honestly, I think partly it's, you know, almost nine o'clock on a Thursday night. And I think we already made that amendment, but I wasn't sure. We certainly talked about it. We talked about it at the study session.
Yes.
And I don't recall actually voting on that. And Laura, normally I look over across the room at Laura and who nods at me knowingly and tells me what's going on. And I don't see her. Oh, wait.
Is she there?
Here comes Laura Eliason.
Okay.
Remind us. I can see that she's popping in now. This is her version of looking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, so the, that calendar was approved by board. So this coming 2020 November 3rd election has already been approved.
And so that one will be, it's an elementary only.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
So we do have amended motion on the floor to approve this calendar with the amendment that passed to remove those late start days. I think that was the only amendment that passed. Is that right, Julie?
No, it was also to move the,
Go ahead, Barb.
Wasn't it also to move the?
October 20th to April. Yeah. So those two amendments to the motion. So we have that full mo, is there a third? Julie, you're on mute.
And also to move February 11th to February 18th. That was a quick one. We did.
There was three amendments.
I just want to make sure we, we all know what we're voting on. So the three amendments, go ahead, Julie, summarize the three amendments for us.
So the amendment one was to strike February 11th and change to February 18th. The second one was to remove three late starts. And the third was to move October 20th back to April 8th.
Those are the three amendments that passed for the motion on the floor. So when we vote on the full motion, those are part of that motion now. So seeing no more conversation, discussion or questions, we'll do a roll call vote on the full motion now. Kevin?
Well, just on the whole calendar that we're voting on, the whole calendar and the amendment and all the amendments. I just, my comment is, is there a different way, a better way, a more transparent way to get our community as a somehow I don't know what, and again, I, I want no part of the calendar committee because I know it's daunting and hard. I get it. But is there, I mean, an example of this is for the finance committee, we've included stakeholders. People that have some knowledge of finance have been invited into our finance meetings, which has been helpful. Very helpful, actually, over time. And so, again, I don't have the answers, but I just would, I guess I would ask us to think about, is there a way that we can add a parent voice or parents' voice into this? Would it be the head of the PT? You know, I mean, I, again, I have no idea what exactly that would look like. But just to have some of these things discussed from a parent voice in the committee before it gets to this point, because clearly, you know, a longer, and I'm making it longer, emotion. So with that, I rest.
Thank you, Kevin. Julie, roll call vote.
Hey, now we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Lucy Payne.
Chair is aye, motion carries. Thank you for that long discussion. It was very helpful, I think, for to hear all the perspectives. So moving on to approval of the, I'm sorry, personnel. Barb, you want to start us down through the personnel list we have in front of us?
Yeah, sure. You bet. So, and thanks to Scott Brisky, Lynn Beaker and Susie Prather for sticking around for, to help us with all of that. We appreciate it. You, you helped us work through everything. So thanks for doing that.
And Laura.
Thanks for coming in to save me. It is nice to know that even though you're not right across the room for me to, to look at, you can jump in and, and save me. So thanks for that. Okay, personnel. We have three, three motions for you. The first, and these are standard, these are, you know, standard things that happen every time this year after we go through our staffing and our student numbers. So the first one is a recommendation to approve employment for licensed personnel. Will continue to be on probationary status for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So Barb, I have a procedural question. It might actually be a question for Laura. In the past, we've done each person separately because the resolution we have to pass has to have a board member for each person. I don't think we can do these as a group, can we? We have to go through each one and then do a roll call vote for each one because we're on technology. Is that right? Laura, do you know? Because in the past, we've done them individually, but the voting was much easier because we were around a table together. This could be a very lengthy process. Laura, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Um, in the past, we've done this motion as a group. And the second mo, and then one following, we've done as a group.
Okay.
Last year, we did the non-renew resolution as a group because of this, each of the persons. So last year, we did each of these as a group. However, I think in years past, the non-renewed may have been done individually, but not, not the probationary or the continuing status.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. That's going to speed things up quite a bit. So Barb, do you want to present on each group and then we'll have a motion and, and keep moving forward?
Okay, so I'm sorry, I was under the impression that you would do a motion for the first one, recommendation to improve employment for licensed personnel who will continue to be on probationary status for the 2022, 21 school year. The list is there.
Yep.
Then is, then there's a motion for that one, right?
Okay. So Mike has moved approval of the recommendation to approve the employment for licensed personnel who will continue on probationary status for next year. Kevin? Kevin, a second to the motion. Any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Hey, Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Lucy Payne.
Chair is aye, motion carries. So next, we have the recommendation to approve contracts as for licensed personnel moving from probationary status to continuing contract status for the 2020, 2021 school year. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that group.
So moved.
Julie, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Second. So we have a motion by Julie, seconded by Mike, to approve the group from probationary to continuing contract status. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Just one second.
Sorry.
I'm missing one, I'm missing one thing. So I, I got it here. Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Lucy Payne.
Chair is aye, motion carries. So the last group we have is the approval of resolution to terminate and non-renew probationary teaching contracts for Sharon Bartels, Nathaniel Hendrickson, and Elizabeth Kratsky at Point 2 FTE for Elizabeth Kratsky. Kind of a motion to move those forward. Thank you, moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Mike Chevalier. So we're voting on the approval of a resolution to terminate and non-renew probationary teaching contracts for Sharon Bartels, Nathan Hind, Nathaniel Hendricks, and Elizabeth Kratsky at Point 2. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mike Chevalier.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye. Aye.
Lucy Payne.
The chair is aye, that motion carries as well. Now we're on to school board committee reports. We'll start with AMSD. I think, Mike, you gave your report, but go ahead and you can tell us again.
Well, yeah, there wasn't one this, this month. And, uh, the next one is scheduled for May 1st. It may be canceled or it may be electronic. And when I find out, and I'll let you all know, and we can all just jump on electronic if that's the case. That's my report.
Thank you, Mike. I will say, I have appreciated the detailed updates during this time period from AMSD. They've done a really nice job of communicating a lot of information to us. Um, MAF, Julie McGraw.
Okay, I have an update from the MAF, um, the Education Foundation event. The Education Foundation found out on March 11th, they started to put together their contingency plan for the gala. They, prior to shifting to the virtual event, they had over 165 items for the gala. Many people came together to, um, offer all of their expertise to switch this to online. While a virtual event was not the original format, um, they were overwhelmed by the positive outcome and the support shown by our amazing community. During the event, they were able to raise more than $95,000, which will ensure MAF can continue the programming that, for Montomedi Public Schools and staff that they have relied on for over 30 years. The special focus during Legacy Night 2020 was the Angel Fund, which supports students with the greatest needs in our district for items such as food, clothing, e-learning, school supplies, to make sure that all of our students are set up for success. The event has currently raised $35,000 for that fund. So, um, it, these funds will be used for so many things in our school district. And we are just so grateful to the generous outpouring and support from our community. We're very lucky to live in such a great community. So, um, that's, that's the report. If anyone has questions. Or more to add, Kevin?
Just, uh, important to underline, underline that the Angel Fund is ongoing. So if you missed it, if you weren't able to attend, one is still able to give to the Angel Fund, uh, currently. So go to the MAF, uh, mafgives.org, and you'll see Angel Fund. And there's a little icon of a angel, and, uh, just click on it and donate what you feel you'd like to do.
And if you see Kate Crampy, you should be sure to thank her. And her team for all that they did. And thank you, Kevin, for all of your hard work on the gala as well.
Absolutely.
All right, next on the agenda is MSBA Legislative Ways and Report. That would be me. Um, you all received, um, multiple notifications that Governor Walz will talk to school board members and superintendents tomorrow at 11 o'clock. You do need to pre-register for that, and then they will send you the Zoom link to join that call tomorrow. It is limited to the first 1,000 school board members, um, who sign on tomorrow. Um, the Board of Directors continues to meet all electronically. We have not talked about Summer Seminar. We have not talked about any of those upcoming events at this point in time. I know board staff is working very hard, like everyone else in the education, um, committee right now to think about online opportunities for phase trainings and, and other pieces, but they have not announced those things as of yet. So things are still, um, going well. They have done some other things that are trust edge. I think they moved to online format, and so they are working in those arenas. And, and hopefully hear more about Summer Seminar, you know, more of what's going to happen in August. Um, Northeast Metro 916 Board, Kevin?
Uh, well, uh, I think everybody can, is starting to understand what distance learning looks like in Montomedi. For 916, it has its own unique set of challenges and opportunities. But, uh, you can imagine the, uh, career training piece where you're building a home or dismantling your car, uh, or doing veterinary work. It's kind of hard to do that remotely. So there's really been some changes there also with students that have IEPs. So you can, again, imagine that there's some real challenges with 916. 916 has the, uh, the, the level four students, um, who, yeah, I mean, it's, there really aren't a whole lot of options, but amazingly enough, the people at 916 are, are putting it together and making it work, but it is really challenging. Um, in the arena of, uh, employment, there are, it looks like currently 16, uh, openings at 916. So with, uh, unemployment that we have in Minnesota, there are openings at 916, all sorts of different things. The, uh, meetings that we do in 916 are done via phone call. There are 14 board members. I am the clerk, so I'm the Julie for that group. And not having the visual is, it makes it that much more difficult. So, uh, hopefully we could get our technology going a little better for the next, uh, go route. Um, and then the last and, and probably, you know, a big, uh, thing for those of you that have served on 916 or are familiar with 916, uh, Linda Zahara, who has served as the Laura Eliason of 916, is retiring after 43 years of service. So, um, it was administrative, uh, Professionals Day, was that yesterday or the day before? Do they all blend together? And so, um, I gave Linda a nice thank you, and I gave Laura a nice thank you. So that's my 916 report.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, could I ask you now to also give a MSB update? You're the representative for that as well, I believe.
Yep. Uh, you know, when you're on the Minnesota School Boards Association Board, as Lucy is currently, there, it, there is, you never leave completely. So you get off of the board, but then they put you on another assignment. So I picked up the Chair of the MSB Board, uh, a few years ago, four years ago. And, um, so that's a group, uh, Board of Directors made up of board members from around the state. And MSB is the, uh, insurance trust that the School Boards Association operates. It provides insurance products for 66% of the district, give or take, 66% of the districts, and in varying capacities. So work comp, we have a lot. But on a tulip, which is the community ed, uh, program, there's only currently three people signed up for that. So, um, but what I wanted to report out, which I think is quite relevant to these times of COVID-19, there was indications, uh, for about the last six months that there would be some insurance premium adjustments just as a part of market conditions. For years, it was pretty competitive. The rates didn't go up much. About six months ago, the indications were that rates were going to go up a bit. Then came along COVID-19. The, and so I say this to our group and for Jeff and the administrative team for, for us, when we're doing our assumptions for what our insurance products are going to look like cost going forward, the conservative estimate is 10%, but is more, more than likely could go up from there. Cyber, we have cyber insurance. Cyber is one that, as you maybe have known on your, at your home, on your phones, we're getting a lot more stuff coming in. Same thing's true with, uh, cyber attacks on, on, uh, local units of government. So just, uh, wanted to give everybody a heads up from what I'm hearing in that group.
Thank you for sharing, Kevin. Um, are there other board, um, reports or subcommittee reports that we need to share tonight? All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Barb for a superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, as we know, uh, distance learning continues through the remainder of the year. That was announced today. I do want everyone to know that it was reported in the paper before we actually had been told. So it wasn't that we were keeping things from you. We, we found out about that this morning. We, we, we caught wind of it through the paper as well. So, um, that's, um, so all families have received, um, communication from us, regarding what's, what's to come and, and the fact that, that distance learning is going to continue. And we know two things, well, many things, I suppose. But one thing we know is that our, um, staff have been working really hard, um, to make this work and to do everything they can to keep kids connected and keep kids learning. And I think they've done a fabulous job, and I know they will continue to. Uh, we also know, uh, it's been hard at home trying to, to facilitate distance learning. And I would hope that all families and parents know that we don't expect you to be, um, teachers. We don't expect it. We know that this is hard. And I want to put in a plug for, um, taking care of yourselves and taking care of the, taking care of your kids' mental wellness and, um, just being okay and being together because that's going to be the most important thing. Our teachers will catch everyone up. They'll take care of things next fall when we're together. They know what to do. You've heard, you've just heard, um, Suzie and Scott talk a lot about how they use data to figure out where students are and, and figure out what they need. And so I know that, um, no matter what, just do your best and, um, keep plugging along and keep connected because that's the thing that's going to be the most important for, for our kids, um, long-term. Um, so one of the things that, uh, we keep talking about and keep thinking about is, well, our, our seniors and how hard this is for them because, um, you know, we, they are missing out on, they're losing so much from not being able to be together and all those things that, that, all those celebrations, all those lasts, the series of lasts that they have, um, coming up, we know that that's hard for them. And we're going to do our best to come up with ways that we can recognize them. And it'll be different. It won't be the same, um, but we'll find ways that we, we can do that for them as, as best we can, and we'll come together. And, and in fact, as soon as they sent out, um, the message this afternoon, someone with preschool students immediately shot an email back and said, what are we going to do for the seniors? And she had lots of ideas. Um, so I do want you to know that everyone's thinking of our seniors. And, um, and we're, we're going to do what we can to, to make this, make, make your, end of your school years at, at Montomedi. Well, I suppose they're memorable already, but in a positive way too. So we'll come up with some ways to do that. Um, in fact, we, we've begun some of that, and we, um, had a modified celebration of excellence yesterday. We, a number of us took, uh, we split up all the, the teachers and students that were to be recognized, and we dropped off a, a gift for each of the, the students who are being recognized as being part of the top 10% as along with their teachers that they wanted to, um, recognize. And we dropped something off, and then at 6:30, they got to watch, uh, a video where, um, they had the program for the celebration of excellence. And they did a very nice job. The, the team that puts that together did a very nice job. Um, and so we do hope to do, um, to do some other things for our, our seniors. And I, if you haven't gotten a chance to listen to the governor's speech today, one of the things he did that I really appreciate, and you can totally tell he's a former teacher, what he did is he laid out, um, the questions that we need to ask ourselves before we decide what's next. And what I appreciated about that is that even though I don't know, um, how much we're going to, you know, what the stay-at-home order is going to be in, in June, I now have this list of questions that he uses to guide his decision-making and determining whether or not something is going to work. And so as, so now we have these questions too. And so as we're trying to plan things, uh, we have the questions that we can ask ourselves to figure out whether or not it's something that we can do. And so, so we're going to continue to plan in that regard. Um, I do want to also recognize that the White Bear Center of the Arts had the visual art show this evening while we were here in our school board meeting. And we did have, I don't have the names of the students, but we did have a number of students who were recognized, um, for their visual artwork, um, tonight. And then the, um, the awards for the writing competition will be happening shortly to, in, in May. And so we had, and we had quite a few students who, um, are going to win awards there as well. Um, finally, I also do want to make sure, I, um, acknowledge all the work of the Legacy Night Group and MAF because, um, I, I watched how, how much effort was put into that event and then how much effort had to be put into that to turn that around. And I thought it was a fabulous, um, a fabulous event, um, so well done. And we are so thankful for all the work that, um, MAF did for us to, to keep us, keep us going with that Angel Fund to support our students. And I, I just thought, I just thought it was a fabulous event. So thank you for that. Um, and so with that, I think I'll close. Thank you.
I'm mute. Sorry. Thank you, Barb. Um, seeing no other items on the agenda, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Um, we don't need a roll call vote for this one. We are, uh, we'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being patient with the longer meeting tonight. It does take a little bit longer with the roll.